Recording.
Thank you. I will now call to order the Tuesday, February sixteenth meeting of the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority to order. First item on the agenda is, well, I guess I'll do a roll call vote for for all commissioners present. Commissioner Baloga. Is Commissioner Baloga present?
He will not be here at the beginning of the meeting.
All right. Commissioner Hookin?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
And Commissioner Olson?
Present.
And Commissioner Thorson is present. And now we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Lewis, move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Hookin, seconds.
Motion by Lewis, second by Hookin to approve the agenda. Now for the roll call vote. Hookin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thorson is an aye. Agenda approved. On to organizational business. It looks like we have one item on the table this evening, and it is item three point one, the strategic planning session. And all, at this point, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. We have a facilitator here, Margaret Perez, and she will take lead from here.
Hi, everyone. Margaret, nice to see you all again. And pardon me for being in my bedroom, and you're probably going to hear a two-year-old screaming because she wants to be with me. So I've locked myself away in the only room with a lock. This probably happened last meeting, too. But anyways, so bear with us as we get resituated in our, in our home and part in my bedroom. Okay, so the wonders of COVID. So today, we're gonna, and Myra, are you controlling the deck or am I?
Right now I am, but you're co-host, so I think that you can just take it over at any time.
And did Tracy give you the link to, for the?
I actually haven't.
Okay, so what we're gonna actually do, I'll, I'll share my screen so you can see where we're going today. But Tracy is actually gonna put a link into the chat box, and that link, I'd like you all to click on right now.
Margaret, do you actually want me to share my screen? So if I'm doing typing, they can see what I'm typing?
Yes, that would be helpful. And, and, and so there's, there's two ways to follow along today. One is you can be in that Google Doc at the same time as any of us, and you'll see live in, in person whatever Tracy is doing. She'll be updating it there. Or, or you can be following along on the screen with us in the share screen in, within the WebEx. So whatever works for you, there will be parts of the meeting tonight where we'll encourage you to type yourself into that Google Slides document. Again, that link was just shared. Being that, many of us are now joining that document.
Margaret?
Yep.
Margaret, technical problems. I finally figured out how to get pictures going here. So would you repeat the Google thing that you just mentioned?
How do I get there?
Yep. So what we want you to do is go into the chat box. The chat box, if, I know you guys are on iPads. On my computer, it's, it's a floating bar in the lower portion of the screen, and there should be, there's, there's a chat, little chat icon. It looks like a little talking bubble. And within that chat icon, Tracy put a link. And if you click on that link, it'll just redirect you to the slide deck. Your, my computer with the city's security settings is giving me a warning sign that's directing us to an external site, and you just want to press continue. I promise it's safe.
And for staff, I just want to make sure you know that this is not the link I sent you last week. This is, this is the clean link for our meeting today. So click on this as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm in the chat thing. It shows eleven participants. Is that what I needed to be?
So that's the participant link? There should be another one that actually says chat?
It says that at the bottom. Let's see.
So you need to actually click on that little chat icon rather than the participant one. You probably have a participants panel open.
Tracy, you put a link up?
Yep, in the chat.
I got it. Okay.
It's a, it's a Google Doc.
Okay.
And it should take you to a slide presentation that looks like my screen that I have shared here.
I don't know. I can't see what you're sharing.
I think that we actually have everybody in. Is, is anybody not in? I'm seeing eleven total viewers, and I think that there's eleven of us on the call.
I, I can see the document, so.
Okay. And you might not, if you're on your iPad, you might only see the Google Doc, which is fine. We'll just walk you through which slide you need to be on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So, and then I would encourage you, don't, you know, don't skip ahead if, if you can hold back temptation and just be on the slide that we're telling you to be on. So right now, we're gonna pass to slide two. If everybody wants to jump to slide two, oh, I can even see you guys all jumping there. So I can, I can tell who's working ahead. So don't be tempted to work ahead. Just be on slide two. Looks like a few of us are still on slide one, and that's okay. So on slide two, we've got tonight's agenda. As you see, we're gonna do some welcome, welcoming introductions, and part of that is gonna be getting us all more comfortable with using Google Docs so that we can do some more interactive work together. And then we're gonna jump into an action planning workshop, building off of the work that we did in our last session. Tracy was really helpful in helping me think through a plan for this evening that I think is gonna help get us to an end result. That's gonna give some, some key actions and next steps for Erica and the rest of the HRA staff to be able to take back and build out a work plan. And, and so we're, we're in for a good evening. We, we've got about two hours planned. And so I would encourage you, you know, during this time, again, take, take bio breaks as you need to, again, stay engaged in, in the content that we're doing, kind of when we're doing it, and I'll try and be good about directing you through the slide deck as we move along. And, and we will be doing some smaller group-like breakout sessions as well, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So with that, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna have everybody proceed to slide three, and we're gonna do introductions. Tracy, do you want to walk us through this?
I will. So this is your first taste at actually typing into the slide deck. And so this is meant to be kind of an introduction as well as a tester to see how you do. So part of tonight's activity is to prioritize some of the key activities that you did. So what I'd like for you to do is find the box next to your name and type in there, you've got your name, type in there two priorities of your own life. And just as an example, you can see mine at the bottom. My two priorities, priorities that I listed are Muriel, my daughter, and giving back to my community. So we'll, I'll give you just a few minutes here, and Myra and Mike are available to help people. If you can't figure out how to type in there, you can, looks like most folks are doing pretty good. You can also type your notes in the chat, and either Myra or Mike will grab them and stick them in the boxes for you.
Okay. Thank you. I've, I've got a problem. Like, when I tap on the spot, it goes to the next slide, and then I know I'm in trouble.
Okay.
So I'll have to go to the chat room, I guess, right?
Yep. You can either do that, John, or if you want to just say it out loud, Mike or Myra can grab it and type it in the box for you. And Myra, you can put in your own priorities as well. We want you to participate, too. So we'll give just a couple more minutes.
Yeah, please.
And if you, and if you're feeling advanced enough in your technology and comfortable, you can have fun with colors and fonts in your box, but otherwise, don't feel any pressure to get as fancy as, as Tracy got.
Myra, if, I'd like you to put in to leave a good legacy and, and accomplish good progress for affordable housing.
Okay, we'll just give another quick minute here.
John, accomplish what?
Leave a good legacy and accomplish progress in good and affordable housing. I need, I need to come down or something with somebody because I've got all kinds of weird things going on with my machine here. I can't get into the chat room right now.
Okay. We, we can just keep that in mind, too, John, as we work through this and make sure that you're partnering with Myra or Mike and to make sure that your comments are in here. And part of them, part of today's activities will just be talking out loud, and part will be writing in some notes, too.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like typing has stopped. So let's just start at the top, and I just organized these by alphabetical, by first name, so it's no rhyme or reason of, other than that. So Erica, do you want to start and just share with us two priorities in your life?
Yes, my children, which I have two young, young boys, young men, and social justice.
Great. Thank you. Brian?
Good evening. Family and doing good work.
Great. Cheryl?
My, my work is an elementary literacy tutor in my community.
That's great. Is there a specific school that you work at, Cheryl?
Um, yes, Westwood Elementary.
Wonderful. Sherry?
Very people-oriented family and community.
Great. And Jack, we don't have with us tonight. John, we heard yours, but do you want to share them again?
Leave a good legacy, which is very broad, and accomplish good progress on affordable housing in our community.
Great. Glad to have you here with that. Uh, Mark? Mark, if you're talking, you could be muted still. Mark, are you with us? Why don't we come back to Mark? Margaret, why don't you do yours?
Similar to what others have said, I, my goal is to, of course, my family, but specifically keeping my kids off screens these days because that's our default in this freezing cold weather and virtual school environment. And then trying to get outside every day, even in, even in the cold weather. I, I even joined a Facebook group recently called a thousand, a thousand hours outside, which is like the goal of everybody in the group is to get outside for a thousand hours every year, which I, is ambitious, but we'll see.
That's great. Mike, how about you?
I'm finding the mute button. Yeah, similar family. I have two young daughters, a two-year-old and a four-year-old, so it's all about enrichment activities with them and difficult when you can't go outside. And then, yeah, my other one's just kind of exercising and mental health, trying to chase fame and getting outside and meeting people and very self-centered, I guess.
That's okay. That is okay. Mark, are you back with us? It looks like you're unmuted. Do you want to share yours?
I am. Yeah, mine are maintaining good health and trying to simplify life a little bit.
Wonderful. And Myra?
Mine are pretty self-centered, I guess, too, but trying to find happiness every day in the little things and then try to keep healthy. I gave up on my children years ago, so they're on their own now.
Vicky, how about you?
Family, which includes my husband, stepdaughter, my father, and our four-legged ones as well, and fitness. I'm very active in the health educational pieces, especially heart health. So that's a big advocacy for me.
Wonderful. And as I mentioned, mine are my daughter Muriel and giving back to my community, specifically Circus, which my daughter is involved in, and our church. So, great. Thank you all for participating in that. And we are ready, I think, to move on to slide number four. So you can down arrow or move, click on the, the fourth box.
And I need a volunteer for this section, just for somebody to just read off our community vision statement. And then I'll have a second volunteer read off what's most critical to our work as a, right from the statement. So volunteer for the first part.
John, I'll start. Bloomington community. Bloomington is a community of choice, a place people seek out to live, work, conduct business, and recreate. We foster vibrant, safe, and accessible neighborhoods, amenities, and destinations. We work together to ensure everyone feels welcomed and engaged in opportunities that foster community life and a sense of longing.
All right. And then I'll maybe, Cheryl, would you mind saying what's most critical to our work as HRA?
Yes. Most critical to our work is HRA. Neighborhoods, vibrant, safe, successful neighborhoods, place people seek out to live.
Great. And as a reminder, again, this is our community vision that's in our 2040 comp plan as a city overall. And these are just some of the keywords that we picked out as, as a commission in our last session. So now we can all proceed on to the next slide. This one, we're gonna go a little bit more rapid fire. I want to just call, I'll call on people. And, and then when it's your turn, just read off, you know, the value and what it means. Just one, one row of, just reminding us of the values that we put together in our last session. So with this one, I'll start with Mark. And I think Mark was having an issue with his mute button before.
I have to flip back and forth from the document. All right. All right. You want me to read the values and then what it means? Is that right?
Yep, just one row.
Okay. Community building and strengthening. What it means, help residents build wealth by promoting and facilitating homeownership, listening to our community residents and their needs, ensuring that there is community voice.
Great. Could I have Erica read off the next one? And on deck, I have Brian?
Foster innovation, taking risk calculated. Driven or blazing the trail? How do we achieve development, redevelopment, in a fully developed community?
All right, Brian. And then on deck, Myra?
There we are. Welcoming and engaging. Increasing opportunity so that all people have access to choice of housing and stability options, rental and ownership. Welcome, welcoming and engaging as a, as a commission, aware of what, of what is going on, and that community voice is represented.
Great. Myra, and then Sherry's on deck.
Strengthen racial equity. Disrupt systematic racism in housing through intentional investment and action.
All right, Sherry, and then Vicky's on deck.
Preserve livability. Support for revitalization, rehabilitation, and preservation.
All right. Vicky, and then Mike's on deck.
Promote sustainability. Foster and support energy-efficient, accessible, and healthy homes.
Mike, and then John's on deck.
Equity, fairness, inclusivity, and choice. Tied to equity, providing affordable housing, everyone has a home. Outcome is an intentional prioritization of resources.
Now we're gonna do John, and then who am I missing? Cheryl is on deck.
Empathy and compassion. Understanding situation of program participants, meeting people where they are at with respect.
Economic impact. Investing in projects, redevelopment, in a way that attracts further investment, spurring private investment in place where it wasn't, in place where it wasn't previously.
Fabulous. So with that, we can actually move on to the next slide. And this is where we're gonna get your creative juices flowing. What I'm gonna have us, we're gonna walk through an exercise where we're thinking about our current reality as an HRA and, and in terms of these values and the vision that we have for our community, and thinking about starting off with what, what we perceive to be the strengths of, of the team as it relates to achieving our vision and, and being able to carry out our values in our work. So what you can do while, for this exercise, Tracy is actually gonna be able to scribe whatever it is that you're saying. I want you to concentrate on, on just participating at this point. So you don't actually need to type into the document. You can just say yours, and Tracy's gonna do her best to keep up with you, and if she legs behind, I can hop in. So with that, what do we perceive to be the strengths of our team as, as it relates to achieving our city's vision?
Our commitment.
And that, Mark, you just stole mine.
Yeah. Experienced staff.
Passion.
Different perspectives. Open-minded.
Diverse backgrounds.
Civil. We interact civilly.
Compassionate and caring.
Um, vision.
Great. This looks like a really good list so far. Now, I'm gonna have us switch gears and thinking about what are the weaknesses of our team, specifically as it relates to being able to achieve our vision in the community.
Not diverse enough?
A little bit more, always when we talk about diversity, I, I always want to clarify kind of what kind of diversity we're talking about. Do you, or would you say like racial diversity specifically, or is there other?
Let me rephrase that. Not representative enough of the people we serve. Does that cover it?
We had another person hopping in. Another weakness.
Specific and broad community engagement.
Say more. So there's not enough?
Yeah, there's, there's a need for both and to do specific universal target, universal, was it targeted universalism? But there's also a need to do broad community engagement, which is, I'll be in that bridge. And so it's the both there.
We haven't interacted with the business community, small businesses.
We don't have enough staff.
Says the staff, feeling overwhelmed.
It's really a weakness, so much as the reality, but it translates into a weakness is, and I'm speaking of the board here, we're, we're very part-time, and I think many of us have a great commitment to our objectives, but we have relatively little time between meetings and additional time we can put in. So it's, you know, it's, I know I'd love to spend more time on the topic. We need to interact more with all stakeholders, and I'll give some examples if you'd like.
Why don't you? Would you?
Okay. Well, residents, low-income people, funding source, organizations, and individuals, nonprofits involved in, in, in low, with low-income housing. As I was reading through the, don't, don't, this is not dictation, but as I was reading through the, the five or whatever columns, six columns of things that were, that, that we're working toward, or that we, we believe we're into, is, I was struck by the fact that there's a lot of players that we haven't interacted with. And Bloomington BHC, the Bloomington Housing Coalition, we need to figure that one out. So this is maybe a third of the list I would come up with.
Thank you. And that's, that's a good point. As I'm looking into the, the second half of our grid that we're filling out here, I think it'll probably be helpful for many of us to refresh our, our minds of the list that we came up with last time and the categories. That's on slide eight. I told you you couldn't jump ahead, but I think that it would be probably helpful for you to just be referencing slide eight as we think about the second half of the grid that I'll prod you for in just a moment. In the meantime, any additional strengths or weaknesses that we want to be sure to capture here in our current reality?
One, one of our weaknesses is the lack of land to develop or to.
And I would say a weakness for the board is there's been a lack of engagement with our community on our end of keeping people involved as well and engaged in what the HRA is doing as residents and community members.
I don't think we have an adequate understanding of the various funding sources and potential collaborators. Would like to see a study, study session where we dig into some of those things.
All right. So now I'm gonna have us shift gears and think about, so referring to the success of the HRA in, in the areas and projects that are listed on that slide eight, and thinking about, you know, this wild victory of being able to achieve that community vision that we read off on slide four. What are the potential benefits of pursuing this course of action that's charted out here? Should be an easy question, hopefully. What would be the benefits if you're successful with your work that's, that's charted out here?
Actual opportunities along the housing continuum. So when I say actual opportunities, it means a produced product that people can live in or, or take advantage of in order to be in Bloomington, which is a community of choice. So full choice. So full choice.
Others, what would be the positive result of your work if you were able to achieve all of this?
Residents needing HRA. Achievements would would feel respected, honored.
Having high. Having a high developer interest. So having many developers interested in wanting to build and develop in our community.
Mike?
The residents are engaged in the community and engaged with the city.
Other fits?
I would say a community that people really want to live in.
That's a good one, Mark.
People who are doing well. Would see the value of helping people who aren't doing well, whether business or individuals.
I would. Any greater funding sources?
And I would build a little bit on John's that we would be a more inclusive, open community.
So Margaret, I would add that Bloomington HRA would be a local, state, or even national model. For really honestly economic justice.
I love that, Erica. Thinking big, really aspirational. But possible.
I, I think we would lobby well with the legislature and other bodies. Because they realize we. Are, we have our heads on this. Finish the blank for me, will you? Because because we're doing good work.
This is Sherry with a tag on to Erica's last comment, which is. I really believe we have the ability to be. At the forefront of suburban affordable housing development, not only in the metropolitan region, but nationwide. We're one of the very few cities that have an inclusionary zoning ordinance that's based on economic impact. And the benefit that affordable housing provides to the economy of a suburban city. So I know that's long. But.
Tracy summarized that in five words or less.
And it's very, I mean, it's something that's very important. For the future of affordable housing for our region. So my summary would be Bloomington as the suburban affordable housing leader. Including new innovative and alternative financing. Mechanisms or tools, whatever word we want to use.
Okay, repeat. But including innovative financing tools.
Yes, thanks.
You can pull the one off about lobbying, because this is really the kind of stuff I was thinking of. All of this means that we will be.
We'll still keep it on, even if it's not, it's, it's, it works. There's no right or wrong answers in this. So I'm gonna, so then the last piece here is kind of a, a mental mind game, but you have to. That we, I want you to think about what would be the dangers of being wildly successful and achieving your vision? So what we're trying to get is our, if you were to, if you were to accomplish everything. That you kind of hope that you've charted out on that slide eight. What, what might happen that you weren't anticipating? What might those unintended consequences be?
The ability to sustain and maintain. Once you become a leader and blaze that trail, then then a lot, a lot of people will follow or a lot of entities will follow. Which limit your funding pool as well as once you have a fully developed city. With no vacancy or other opportunities, that's an, that's a unintended consequence that, you know, how do you shift gears from there?
Premature feeling of success without realizing this is a never ending need.
I would say.
Taking the. Taking the big pick.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I'm taking the, you know, the, the, the big picture redevelopment, commercial redevelopment. Housing and. We can achieve in our, in our redevelopment objectives and then with developers coming along. We, I suppose, could risk. Housing and other things becoming too expensive or more expensive than we expect. Because again, it becomes such a demand area that even, and most of Bloomington's housing is pretty modest, but even modest homes become unaffordable. I know that's long. I'm sorry.
I, I would. I would have to say too, if we were wildly successful, I think sometimes, not quite sure how to word this. Sometimes when you're very successful, you start to forget why you're doing things in the first place. Um, you know, we're talking about making this a more. Inclusive community and that kind of thing. And I think when you're really successful, sometimes you forget the people at the bottom. So it's really, you know, that would be having to keep the eye on, eye on the target like that. It's difficult when you're very successful.
Building off of.
Sorry, I rambled. So however, anybody wants to fix it, go for it.
Tracy did a pretty good job of that. Erica, do you want to go?
Yeah, just building off of that, to be perfectly honest and not a Debbie Downer. When we're being successful, it's our definition of what success is. And we will always leave people out or be seen as not being equitable to some group of people. However, that group may be, just building off of what, of what Cheryl said.
Right. And I think I'll add just a little piece and building off that too. And then that we need to be aware of that. I think it's easy to become discouraged. If you know, if you think people don't see the, the good that you feel that you're doing. So. Kind of just that one extra step to be aware that that's going to happen and not letting it affect our goals.
Yeah, and this is kind of related and maybe it's not even a new bullet point, but. If we grow really large and have lots of new residents and. Maybe Bloomington changes really quickly and it's not who we once were. Or we forget who we were trying to be.
We are.
We risk alienating the people that we're trying to serve.
That, yeah, that's well, well put.
We may get lazy about checking with the people that we're trying to help. Different words that can go with lazy.
Kind of like having your blinders, you kind of get blinders on.
Yep.
Yep.
Overwork.
And so I'm gonna sneak in here. I've been trying for a little bit here. I would say whenever an organization becomes really successful in it, and especially if we make that goal of and, and, and go with. Ms. Coleman's, you know, the, that big picture that you have that opportunity or you have that chance of. How hard it is to retain your quality employees that you do have and the staff that we have. When those opportu, when, when you start having those successes, people will start really noticing and coming after the quality employees and staff that we have. So. Retaining them can be a challenge.
Good point.
That's very good. That's very good.
And I, I think this has already been said, but kind of in a nutshell, how do you determine what is successful? Because I think a couple of people kind of touched on this, but successful to one person is not successful to another person. I mean, I don't know that you can please everybody and it's going to be successful across the board. So how do we define success, successful?
We may burn out and need to, in other words, we need to. Anticipate that we're taking on a lot and self care, both as individuals and as, as a commission.
Yeah, I think I heard somebody slipping something around staff burnout. Yep.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll say this, and I don't know if it's a potential danger of being successful or a weakness. But it is the opportunity and the availability to accept change. And to allow change, but also to lay the foundation for people to come in and be able to run with the next steps. So I don't know where that, that falls, but you do risk staff burnout, you risk retention. But you also have to be open to allowing new people to come in and new ideas to come in. But they need to be able to build off of the historical knowledge that's there. So how do you balance both of those things?
Planning for transition or.
Yeah. Yeah.
Succession planning, yep. Um. I, I think that we have an awesome list here. I know we could probably keep going and now the conversation is even. Probably sparking new ideas for strengths and weaknesses, but I'm gonna just leave this here. And I'm gonna have us proceed to the slide seven. So what we're looking to do here. Is. We, we kind of want to get at what we're committed to doing as an HRA commission. And I want you to stay, you know, high level and focused. We're not trying to do a to do list right now. That's not what we're doing. But we, we kind of want to get at, you know, what this current reality revealed about, you know, what we're willing to do as a group to get to that victory. So one way to, to get at these commitment statements is finishing the sentence. We're committed to a successful work plan that. So I'm gonna actually give you a, a minute or so. I don't want anybody to start sharing their ideas yet. Just take a minute to yourself and think about some ideas that, that you have. That could complete this sentence. All right. Does somebody have one that they feel like would be that they're feeling excited to share? Let's try and get a commissioner to speak out first and then I'll have a staff person go next to share their idea.
I'll, I'll jump. This is Mark. I'll jump in. That incorporates calculated risks. Want to make that even stronger, but you know, it, it is, we have to take risks sometimes. And to make some of the big things happen and especially given. You know, it's a lack of land to redevelop and so forth like that. So we have to really think outside the box and take real risks and be willing to do that. But I think those risks should be calculated. That's why I put that ad. Again, we all, we are obligated to the, to the financial. Well being of the city as well, but I think we have to be worth taking.
This might be a piggyback to that. I think we need to have. A, a work plan that is both realistic and challenging.
Committed to a successful work plan that is both realistic and challenging. Thanks for that, John. Do we have a staff member that would be willing to share something that they came up with?
Sure. This is Brian. Successful work plan that provides the greatest range of affordable housing opportunities. To the entire range of our community members. I'm using range twice here. Maybe there's a better way to say that.
We can, we can wordsmith later.
But. The idea here is providing those opportunities to higher community, not for a certain segment.
Tracy, would you put the word provide before greatest?
Yep. Brian, did I get the rest of that right?
Yep, that captures the thought.
Okay, if there's something you want me to modify in that, please let me know.
Other commitments people want to share?
Um, I'll, I will share one that I wrote down. Mine is somewhat general, so, but. Focuses on inclusivity and fairness.
Thank you.
A work plan that provides focus both short and long range.
Others that haven't spoken yet, anyone else that wants to share a commitment?
Uh, yeah, this is Sherry. I'd really like to meet our affordable housing goals that are set forth in the comprehensive plan. Meaning the appropriate number, eight hun, at least eight hundred and forty-five units over this decade with. Four hundred and forty-five at thirty percent AMI in particular.
I was gonna say, we're committed to a successful work plan that is innovative and novel.
Innovative and novel. I'm gonna then start back at the top of the list and I, I want to get a sense from folks about. Whether there's buy in from, from the whole group on each of these. Or whether any of these need further kind of refining or clarification in order for the group to feel comfortable with them. So we're first gonna start with the incorporates calculated risks, thinking outside the box. Does that? Does that need any further clarification or refinement in order for the group to. Understand what it means or to feel comfortable committing to it? understand what it means or to feel comfortable committing to it? So if we could, it's, what, what I was envisioning is using the
Margaret, John had his hand up. John, did you have something to add on that?
Um, well, a response. On, on the first one, the calculated risks, I think we need to figure out what it is that we need, need to be doing that could be risky. I think if, if we have a conversation about that, I think it would be helpful. Not tonight, maybe, but.
Yeah, and we're, these commitments, we're gonna keep high level, but the, and there will be parts of our, the next part of our work plan where we will go into a little bit more detail. So maybe there'll be an opportunity there. Otherwise, you know, offline figuring out some follow-up to that.
Sure.
Um, can I get a, um, I'm trying to think of the best way to do this now. Can people get back to the participant panel within WebEx? And then within that, there should be options for, oh, I'm sorry. So there, there should be within the WebEx panel, you don't need to be in the participants. There's an opportunity for reactions. And if you can just signify, you're, you're not voting yet, but can you just signify that you found the reactions by just choosing whichever one you want? Just throwing it up there so I can see. Yeah, I know staff has this figured out. Yeah, we got it. Sherry, Mike. Oh, yeah, staff is used to all these reactions. I want to see some reactions from commissioners.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure where that's at because the only thing I have on my screen is your document. I can't go back anywhere.
Okay, so you're having a hard time getting back to the WebEx. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just in your.
Kind of what I figured, that it might be tricky for, for some folks to switch back and forth in between. I was gonna have you vote in WebEx. But what we're gonna do instead is, and this is almost better because it's a little bit even more anonymous. What I want you to do is if you're not comfortable with the commitment, when I, when we go, when I read off the commitment, I want you to just put an X next to it if you're not comfortable with it. Otherwise, we're gonna assume that you're okay with it. Okay? So you can just put your cursor in there. Unfortunately, John, if you're still having issue with your cursor, you're gonna have to call it out. And identify yourself, or you can chat it into the WebEx box as well.
Did you figure out how to chat, John? Or was that still difficult?
Well, I, I don't have an arrow. I, I mean, I'm using my stylus and that's not getting me anywhere either, so. I need in-service.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so for the time being, we'll have to have you, if, if you're not comfortable committing to one, we'll read it off. You'll have to just say something to that effect so that we can register.
I, I just, I just put a smile on, but I, I don't know how I can give you words.
Oh, smile works. That works.
Okay.
I like it. Can, can somebody else, so that I can be on this screen, can somebody else be monitoring for rea- for reactions then? If, in case, in case he has a mad face, and he'll check in.
It was a smiley.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna, this was our practice one, so that took a long time, but the rest of these, we're gonna kind of just clip through quickly so we can get on to the next part. So we're committed to a successful work plan that is both realistic and challenging. Does that need any further clarification? Or comments with that before we vote on it? If you're comfortable committing to that, please just don't do anything. If, if it's something that you're not comfortable with, then put an X. All right, and while we, you know, see if there's any objections to that one, I'm gonna move on to the next one. "We're committed to a successful work plan that provides the greatest range of affordable housing opportunities to the entire range of our community." Does that need further clarification? And if there's any objections, please insert an X. "We're committed to a successful work plan that focuses on inclusivity and fairness."
Margaret?
Yeah.
For, for that one, I don't know how to word it, but that I, I get inclusivity and fairness, but racial equity.
Okay, specifically calling out the racial equity piece.
Yeah, we have a equity business plan with the city that's newly adopted that encompasses quite a bit.
That's good.
Given that.
All right, so again, we're, we're putting an X there. If you're not comfortable with it, otherwise, otherwise we'll move forward. "We're committed to a successful work plan that focuses both short and long range." "We're committed to a successful work plan that meets the affordable housing goals set forth in the comprehensive plan." And "We're committed to a successful work plan that is both innovative and novel." Awesome. So with that, I'm going to have us transition on to slide eight, and now we are gonna get into some small group work. What I want to do is, I'm gonna call off folks, just so that we're all on the same page. We're gonna just go through all of these altogether. Sorry, I'm reading my own facilitation notes. I'm sorry. Tracy, did we want them to do that in small groups or in a large group?
Hold on here.
I, I think we want them to, I think we want to read it all off together and then, and then move into small groups. Okay.
If you can do just like a, a quick overview of the work that was done the last time in large group, but not take a ton of time on that, because then in the small groups, they'll each work on three columns and they'll work on assigning the areas that didn't get assigned.
Great. Okay, so what I want, so, so what I'd like to happen is, again, similar to how we read off the values, we're just gonna kind of clip through this, but I'd like to call on on, on folks to read off just one column. You're gonna read off the title of the column and then the things underneath it. And with that, I'm gonna put Mark on the spot to have him read off the first column on financing, housing and redevelopment. Can you read off, I should say, just read off the items right below that, that label when I call it off?
I'm not seeing your presentation now.
Tracy, did you, um, somebody stopped presenting accidentally? So it's only showing our faces right now.
Got it. We are in, if you can navigate back to the slide deck.
Yeah, uh, you know what, I'll, I purposefully stopped sharing because I'm preparing for the next part. So let me.
I can share mine.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Myra?
Okay.
If you can share and share slide eight, that would be great.
Can you see slide, am I on eight here? See this?
Yes.
Where all you guys are.
Okay, so Mark, can you read off everything underneath financing, housing and redevelopment? All right, I think we're having a hard.
Ah, sure.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, under financing, housing and redevelopment, I have tax abatement, housing revenue bonds, low-income tax credits, NOAA trust fund, opportunity housing ordinance, tax increment financing, livable communities program, RDT tax incentives, belighted properties, affordable housing trust fund and land banking.
Thank you. Erica, could you read off partnerships and stakeholders?
Nonprofit administration support, lenders, developer partners, culturally specific engagement and partnerships, public-private partnerships, youth involvement, BHC list. Is that the Bloomington Housing Coalition?
Yep.
Or collaboration. Partner with supportive housing providers for very low income or those experiencing housing crisis. State and federal partners, leaders. The BHC, the BHAT, faith communities, developers, Hennepin County programs, property management company owners, small business in areas in need of redevelopment attention.
Cheryl, could you read off fairness and equity?
Yes. Ninety-day tenant protection ordinance, fair housing policy, nonprofit administration support, home program, senior community services, incentives, programs to encourage community involvement.
Brian, could you read off homeownership?
Rental homes for future homebuyers, West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, Habitat for Humanity, housing education, maintenance, financing, credit, wealth building, home improvement loans for first-time new homebuyers, down payment assistance.
Sherry, can you read off rehabilitation?
Housing Improvement Area Loan Program, lead-based paint abatement, single-family housing rehab loan, curb appeal loan program, Home Energy Squad Enhanced, Home Improvement Fair, Neighborhood Loan Program, Housing and Environmental Loan Program.
And Myra, would you do rental assistance?
Housing Choice Vouchers, Tenant-Based Section Eight, Project-Based Voucher Program. PBB.
Great. So now, we're gonna put you into small groups. So if you want to, uh, I'm sorry, so we're, I'm, I'm jumping ahead again. I'm sorry. I kind of had, I have two different things in mind. So what I want you to look at first before we hop into small groups, we're still on slide eight, is this uncategorized category. And we, I don't want to spend too much time on it because we're, we can keep talking about it in small groups if we want, but we weren't sure when we were putting together this, this grid and putting finishing touches on it. If some of these things in this uncategorized category were supposed to be in some of these categories already, but we didn't want to categorize them for you. So I'm wondering if there's any obvious fits from that uncategorized category that belong in one of these existing categories.
Single-family redevelopment should go into housing finance and redevelopment.
And Margaret, we can do this in the small groups too, just because we'll have to move them in the small groups.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I think we should do, I, I had it, I have it in my notes that we're doing it in large group, but I think it makes more sense to do it in small group now that we're, I'm sitting here.
Yeah, they're, the uncategorized are in each of the small group pages, so it's set up that we can do that way.
Okay, let's, let's do it that way then. So let, let us proceed to, to nine. Slide nine, so this is showing what group you're gonna be in. Tracy will be with group one, along with Vicky, John, Brian, Erica and Myra, and I'll be in group two along with Mark, Cheryl, Jack is not here, but, and then Sherry and Mike. Then, so group one is gonna be working off of slide 10. And group two is gonna be working off of slide 11, so we each have our own slide where we're kind of gonna be capturing notes. Your facilitator will take care of, of moving stuff around, so you don't need to worry too much about, about having access to it, although we are gonna do some voting. So if you're able to get into the slide, that would be helpful for this section of it. There are instructions on your slide about what we're doing. But again, you're gonna do just a quick review of which categories you were assigned. And look at if any of those uncategorized items belong in that in any of your categories. Just concentrating on your three, you don't need to worry about the other three. So just look at that uncategorized category and see if anything belongs there. And then the goal is not to place all of the items, because they might belong in the other groups' categories, or there might just still be uncategorized.
So I'm just gonna give some really quick instructions on how breakout into groups looks. So I have you set up in groups. I'm, once I set, click the button, you will receive a little pop-up window that says, click here, and it'll take you into your group. For group one, I'm gonna stay, I'm not sure if we end up staying in the main room or if we actually go into a separate breakout, but I'm just gonna make sure everybody gets transferred, and then I'll be over into group one so that we can get started. And Margaret, do we want to spend 10 minutes in here? And then, because then we were gonna come back and actually do the prioritizing everybody together on each slide, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna click the button, you'll go in. If you run into troubles, I'll be in the first group, like Margaret said, and she'll be in the other one, and we'll guide you through that process. But this goes back to our introductions and prioritizing, and we're taking your work from last time and starting to pull out what are the, the key areas. So here we go. Okay, Mark and Cheryl, I still see you here.
Yeah, the only thing that I am seeing on my iPad is the Google Doc. So I don't see anybody in the meeting. I hear voices, but that's.
Okay. Do you have a way to switch back to the, to maybe minimize the Google Doc?
Let's see if it brings me into it's not bringing me back to the meeting, though. I, I can't, I'm, I just, the document's the only thing that's coming up.
Okay.
I mean, I have to get back in, I'm, it's like I'm not in WebEx anymore. I mean, that's what it feels like. All I have is a document on my screen.
Do you have other? Let's see. But you can hear their voices in there.
Yeah, I can. And it's, it's not a mental problem.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull you out and see if I can put you back in and see if the pop-up pops up.
Okay.
Hold on. Okay, are you still with me?
I'm still here. I don't see anything except my Google document.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, why don't you close the Google Doc for right now? Because you can always scroll back to the, if you close it, hopefully you'll see the WebEx.
Okay, let's see. Now, now I'm not in, and I'm not even in the meeting anymore.
Okay.
Back to WebEx. Okay, now I'm back in WebEx. I don't have the document anymore.
Okay, that's okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put you back into the breakout. You're in breakout two.
Okay.
And, and then what I'm gonna do is when you get there, open the chat box again and scroll back to the top, and you can click that Google Doc again, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you into group two now. Watch for that pop-up box.
Okay. Yep, join. Got it.
Great. Great.
Ash Wednesday.
We're back.
And we're back also. Everybody here?
Yep.
Yes, we are.
We have to unmute if we want to talk.
Yep, you do. When you come back from a breakout, you're automatically muted.
Oh, that's helpful, including for your facilitator, because I was talking. Over me. Okay, welcome back. So what we're gonna do is we're working our slides, but this time, and we're gonna do the prioritization step. So, but we're gonna go all together as a group, because we didn't want to give any one group the authority to only prioritize certain things. So I, what we're gonna do is one, one group at a time. We're gonna do prioritization, but before we do that, I want to give each group a chance to just share briefly anything that they talked about in their group, if they moved things around or had discussion or aha moments that they want to share back with the greater group. We'll start with group one. Did you appoint somebody to talk, share back with the group?
We did not get, we did not talk about appointing someone. So if there is someone that would like to share back on the different areas that were moved around and addition that was made.
I will, I'd be happy to call on someone too.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Thanks, Erica.
So we actually found that quite a few of these could be categorized within the three groups that we have, which were financing, housing, and redevelopment, partnerships, stakeholders, fairness, and equity. And then we added as an overarching environmental sustainability. We felt that was a category that was overarching over a lot of the different categories.
And if we want to move to slide alone, to look at group two's categories, and then Sherry, do you want to share back what we talked about? We had the much easier, smaller category, so you guys had the harder work.
We actually felt like many of the uncategorized belonged in group one. That would be why your conversation was longer, I think. We moved to the homeownership section, aging in place, single family redevelopment, and potentially pieces of life cycle housing in senior communities. You'll see, we also put life cycle housing in rehabilitation and rental assistance, because that's something that would likely be in every category. And I think that's it.
Yeah, we had discussion around where is sustainability, and I think that you guys reflected that in yours as well, is that, you know, it could, it can, it needs to be incorporated in all of these categories. So it's sort of an overarching thing as well. Great. So now we're gonna go back to slide ten, and working one category at a time. I want to just allow for just a couple minutes of discussion among the group to hear if there's any sense of, if people want to make their case for anything in this category that they feel like really needs to be prioritized among the things underneath this first category of financing, housing, and redevelopment.
I'll say financing and lobbying. Just because I'm thinking with the hat of, we need more sources of funding to achieve our goals. So I don't think anybody disagrees, because they're already in the column, but I think that's a high priority of getting the additional resources to continue the work.
And I'm just moving some of these, not that they're lower priority, but just so when we go to voting, everything is a little bit more separated.
When I look at this column, a lot of these are tools, but but the actual goal isn't really called out, and maybe doesn't need to be, but that's creation of affordable housing. And preservation of affordable. Does that need to be added?
Preservation of affordable housing?
Creation and preservation.
Sorry, what did you say?
Creation and preservation. So building new and also preserving what we have.
I just want to say thank you for that, Brian, because when I, after our discussion and looking at the briefly of the second slide, I thought rehabilitation, financing, housing, redevelopment, economic redevelopment is all really one topic. It's like one big, large topic.
I know Tracy's trying to like re-categorize these, and now I'm sticking one back.
That's okay.
I, just an overall comment, as I looked through this list before the meeting, I think there are some that would be good for us to have study sessions on, like livable communities, for example, blighted properties, that I think would be good for us to get periodic report, maybe annual or semi-annual for things like that. So we just kind of keep some of these things on our table throughout the year, without necessarily taking any definite action, but keeping them on the table. The TIF, the TIF, TIF financing, I think we need to know to what extent we can count on that, and to what extent we can't look for development that might need that.
Okay. Partnerships and stakeholders column. Anything that we want to kind of make our case for in terms of, you know, what needs to be prioritized in terms of partnerships and stakeholders?
So I'll chime in, youth involvement, culturally specific engagement and partnerships, and state and federal partners and leaders, I feel like are very, very high.
What was the second one you said?
Culturally specific engagement and partnerships.
Thank you.
And excuse me, because I did not mean to leave out small businesses.
Good.
Other, other things that people want to make a case for?
One of our signature developments would involve Hennepin County, the Metropolitan Council, and Metro Transit. And so they would be other regional partners perhaps, as well as state and local, or state and federal.
Maybe even just amending that and saying state, regional, state, and federal partners and leaders.
Would that part, would that one be public, private, or no, Sherry?
No, I mean,
It's all public.
I was thinking right now about Metro Transit and Hennepin County and the Metropolitan Council, and the funds that they may have available to assist with our project in particular. But yes, there will be private development there.
Okay.
Somebody's clock is telling us it's seven o'clock. We've got about a half an hour left. Content, which is, we're right on track, guys. This is going well. Okay. In the last category on this screen, looking at fairness and equity, does anybody want to make a case for prioritizing certain things within this category?
Life cycle housing, I think, is a very important one, that we capture all the different phases of the customers. They might be in very different places in their lives and need different housing options.
I think the protection ordinance, it's a bit confusing, but there's a, you can't be evicted or whatever during COVID kind of thing, but that's a real important one for many people. So implementing it and engaging the public on that.
All right, so now that we've had, we've all had a chance to maybe make, make a case on any of these we think are particularly important. You'll see these little blue dots over to the side. You should be able to pick up those blue dots and drag them over. Each person gets two dots for this slide, okay?
I will need to get my document back. Can that be shared with me again? Because now I'm just getting what you're sharing, so.
Yep, so Tracy will drop that link back into the chat box so that it's fresh. If you're still having trouble, again, I know John was having trouble being able to edit or work in the Google slides, you can just tell us your vote. But you get two votes total, and what you're doing is on this slide, the individual items, not the category titles, so the individual items. What, what do you think that HRA staff should be prioritizing in their work plan? In their work plan? What are, what are the top priorities that you want to make sure? And you just get two votes for now. If you want to, if you think that there's one thing that needs to happen here that is essentially, you can put both dots on, on one thing.
I, I do not. I, I do not have access to the document.
Okay.
So Cheryl, can you pull the um, chat back up? I, I just dropped the chat, the link back in the chat.
A little red dot and there's no little red dot.
And, and my dot disappeared between, behind creation and the preservation of affordable.
Yes, so did mine and then I moved the box by mistake, so.
Oh, okay, I can, I can do some, that's just a, yeah, it's like a formatting thing, I can.
So, I don't have a red dot.
Okay, so I think there's three dots behind creation and preservation.
Cheryl, if you want to eat, um, tell us verbally over, over the um, web or um, put it in the chat box what your votes are, we can place your dots for you.
Okay, so we get two dots now.
You get two dots for this slide. Yep, then you'll get two dots for the next slide too.
Okay, so I need to look at this again.
It's a lot of power.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's really hard when we're just dealing with touch, touchscreens too.
And just two dots, that's all I get, okay.
So, so for that, anyone that would like to um, either drop their um, comments in the chat or just let one of us know, um, we can make, we can move those for you.
Creation and.
I apologize for kinda the lack of consistency with the touchscreens. This, this is actually good feedback for us in, in doing these kind of exercises in the future.
And public and private partnerships.
If anybody sees there's disappear behind a box again, let me know and I'll um, reorganize the order of the boxes.
And just a reminder that um, me and Tracy aren't voting, otherwise everyone on the call gets two dots.
All right, and I am typing my choices into the chat, so.
And there will be um, probably six extra dots.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
So we have a number of dots off to the left here. Not the six in a row, but the others that still need to be placed. So if you need assistance, let us know.
And if, yeah, I think that we got all of those dots that need uh, that, that were hidden, but if you know that one of your dots got dropped behind a thing, let us know and we can fix it.
Okay, I'm uh, I, I'm gonna have to dictate, I um, we, I.
Can check my other one again.
I think um, Myra, whoever, uh, didn't, didn't we group some things about lobbying and getting financing? Erica mentioned something like that. You can put a dot wherever that is.
See, I don't see where that went. Did we put that up top?
Lobbying has a dot over it in the first column.
All right, Myra, can you move um, John's and um, Mike, can you take care of Cheryl's in the comments? And I will do Vicky's, which is in the comments. That way we are not overdoing each other.
I was gonna say, yeah, I started to move a dot. I realized I probably shouldn't, because then we won't be tracking who.
Okay, I've sent both of mine now, because I kinda did them in two pieces.
Great, thank you.
Um, Myra, there was one about um, engaging, gauging uh, communities, and I don't know where that one got. I think it was in the partnership stakeholder column.
Is it the BHC, B-Hat Faith Communities Developers, Hennepin County Programs, John? Is that the one?
Or Culturey Specifics Engagement and Partnerships. This one culturally specific? Okay. We'll put one over there.
Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Interesting to manage technology over many different platforms and, and skill base.
Yes, I'm gonna just move these dots so we can read this one. Okay, Tracy?
Yeah, just make sure they're touching, so we know where they go. I just wanna clarify the one by, in the first column, by affordable housing. This one dot is to go with this, is that correct? Whoever put that one there?
Yes.
Okay, and lobbying, uh, this dot here?
Yes.
One with lobbying? Okay. Myra, did all three of these to the right of creation and affordable housing go with that one?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna move them a little more, so they're.
And that's one on the left of it. I think that was definitely one also.
Yep, and then I wasn't sure that the dot to the left of small business in areas in need of redevelopment mention, does that get a dot? Or is that supposed to be with creation and preservation?
With small business? Okay.
Okay.
Great. And that's okay if they're over the top, because we can clean it up later.
Yeah, I just want people to be able to read it here, so they know what it is.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so what, what I want us to do, did we get all the votes registered?
It looks like it, yeah.
All right, and then, so we're gonna slide eleven, same drill, um, but we're, let's about um, if anybody make a case for this homeownership category, if any feel like really needs to be prioritized within this category.
They're so connected in order to have options, that it's, for me, it's really hard to do down payment assistance with improvement, but education, they're all part of, they, they need each other in order to survive.
And, and I think an important component of this is what we're prioritizing is, you know, and maybe what, what the, what we're trying to make the case for is it's a, a focus in our work plan on any of these pieces in order to move our vision forward. So I know that they're all kinda feel interconnected, but is there kind of, are there gaps or things that really need to happen that need in our work plan, that need to be part of the work plan?
So I'll say yes.
Yeah. Go ahead Erica.
Um, that education power meant with that. That housing education is humongous. It's like that, it just, it, and it spans everything.
Yep.
Um, but down payment assistance is something we don't have and it has to happen if we can do some other things, but it has to happen.
I would offer maybe to add something such as comprehensive first-time home buyer supports.
Oh, brands?
Yep. Something of that nature that might capture all of those individual sort of um, education, down payment, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Adding that in.
You're, you're getting to be a good staff person, Brian, don't leave.
Supports may not be the best word, but um, program, I don't know.
I think we know what you mean. So let's move to the rehabilitation category. Does anybody wanna make a, a case for things that need to be prioritized and in, in the work plan?
I would, I would say the loan programs, they've been wildly successful. And um, I think um, you know, council is, is generally been supportive, but we wanna make sure that they continue to be and make that a high priority.
Um, and is there any particular loan program or?
The housing improvement area loan program and the single family um, rehab loan.
And I would say, building off of what Brian just provided, that life cycle housing is really important.
And then lastly, um, rental assistance. Um, and you know what? Uh, let's see, because we have, and I didn't really consider this on the last, but um, because we've got life cycle housing, for example, repeated across three categories here. Uh, how about if you're voting for life cycle housing, I'm gonna create a, a fourth one over here and you're gonna vote on this one, so that we're not spreading out votes unintentionally across three categories. Um, okay, so then rental assistance, does anybody wanna make a case for prioritizing anything in this category?
Uh, hands down, it, section eight has to be prioritized, like hands down.
You stole it from me, Erica. I was gonna say, that's the biggest thing we do. We help the most number of people, yes.
Well, hopefully with the new administration, we'll be getting some more section eight vouchers.
And you took it from me, Sheri, because I was gonna say, and back to that lobbying, we need more vouchers, so. I mean, section eight's the biggest, absolutely, so.
In terms of us, a lot of that we're locked into by the feds and whatnot. But uh, I know we've had discussions in the past about, there's a way for us to uh, go for more anyway. Brian, uh, maybe, I remember you talking about that. So what I'm, what I'm wondering is, if we make it a priority, how, how much can we affect that?
For the, for, for the HRA's specific work plan.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it, it's, you, you can't grow the program unless there is funding available, and there really hasn't been for many, many years.
Right, but.
Program in that way.
Yeah, so I think in a way, it doesn't belong on this, on this list, but um, anyway, uh, uh, except that we could do the renegade thing, which is my term for it, but yeah. So maybe, I think that's in, I think it's in our plan, no matter what we wanna do.
Yeah, you don't get a choice. So maybe a case for not voting for prioritizing it, just because it kinda gets prioritized, because it's the bread and butter of what you do. And only grow if you have other things in place that you don't have control over. Okay. All right, so with that same drill, um, you had trouble moving your dots before, you can chat your, your choices into the chat. Um, how about we just plan on, you're assigned to this, so Myra, you take Cheryl, Mike, you take John, and uh, Tracy, you take Vicky. If anyone else chats Thursday, then we'll assign somebody to move your dots. Otherwise, go ahead and, and start moving your two dots to your two top choices. And I will work on getting things to appear on top of.
I somehow stretched out my dot to kind of an oval.
I know, that happens.
You're special, Brian.
Oh, so did I.
I, you know, I take it back to, I don't, if somebody can help me move, I can't figure out in Google slides how to get the text box to move back or forward. Oh, arrange, arrange, order, bring to front, send it back.
Yeah, I actually, I've been doing it.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Is somebody moving for the chat box?
Yep, I've got Vicky's. Uh, Myra, were you doing Cheryl's?
I'm doing Cheryl's, yep.
Okay.
And then John's, I see in there. Thank you all.
One?
Yeah, I did, I put two in there. But there were two.
Public, private partnerships, is that on this one?
No, that's the last one.
Okay.
Okay, you gotta go down to um, comprehensive first, I don't mind. Comprehensive, do you see that now?
I got, I got that one.
Okay, and then, and, and then that's the second one.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I, I missed that. I thought that was.
So, they're both there.
Okay, got it.
I, the, I, I didn't use Brian's wording, but uh, my housing ed would be the comprehensive first time.
Oh, got it, so I'm just moving that, yep. Okay, I'm seeing the majority of dots placed, and if people need to still be moving around their choices, that's, that's fine.
I'm just straightening some out. Looks like we have five down here on the last one. Is that right?
It's about right.
All right.
So then, um, now go back to slide ten, and you're gonna see that while we were working on, on slide eleven, some stars appeared. A little magic elf.
It's magic.
Stars. So now, this is gonna be your, your last chance to put weight on to something from this category. Tracy, these are stars across, uh, just on this slide, correct?
Correct, just on this slide, so you each, you get one star this time.
Star for this one, and this is your top choice. So this is gonna give additional weight to whatever. You can choose a new category, if for some reason you wanna do that, you can, or you can put it on one of your categories that you've already voted on, but just put an extra star on.
Yep.
So you get one star this time.
Okay, Myra, I'll tell you who my star goes to.
Cheryl, where do you want it?
Writing it down here, um.
And the others of you, if you wanna just say them out loud, that's fine too, we can move them, or you can type them in.
Mine's create and preserve affordable housing.
And you moved that one, Sheri?
No.
I'll, I'll move it for moving Sherri's.
Uh-oh.
I move Sherri's, nobody do that.
Sorry to be so predictable.
Thanks for being with us.
It is my, it is my work plan, so.
Myra, did you get uh, Cheryl's there in the chat box? Or was that from the previous?
No, I just, I put it up. Did you get it, Myra?
I see it.
Okie dokie.
I'll move that up here.
So we've got four people that haven't voted yet.
Actually, one of those is Jack, so I'm gonna delete one.
Okay, so we have three people who haven't voted yet.
Okay, and I see John's. Uh, Mike, do you wanna move John's?
Okay, we've got one lonely star, one lone star. And I don't know who it belongs to, so somebody can be dishonest and claim two star votes.
I'm already in the chat, uh, document.
It's too late now, John, we already saw your chat.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna just allow that star to linger then.
You know what, I, uh, it could be Vicky's, because I did not move one for Vicky, because I was doing something else. Did
Oh.
Anyone else move Vicky's?
I did not move Vicky's.
Okay, I'm gonna move it. And we'll call it good.
Okay, so then same drill with slide eleven, you get one star to give some extra oomph to where you think we need to be.
Okay.
Or prioritizing staff time. Our advertising staff time.
There you go, Myra.
Good thing Cheryl.
Got it.
And Mike, you moved John's?
My star's with everybody else's, but it won't move.
Is this you over here?
Yes, it says ask control, ask to annotate view.
Oh, it's because you're, it's because you're trying to move your star on the WebEx screen.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm in the wrong document.
Yeah. That's why. But that's okay.
Sherry, I moved you.
Uh huh.
Which one did you, is that what you wanted? Comprehensive first?
It is.
So it's it's reassuring to me to see the the groupings and seeing where there's a lot of um priorities uh that are shared um among people. So hopefully that's a relief to to HRA staff that will be writing a work plan off of this, that there's some some good um direction emerging from this. I'm going to now move us on to the the last kind of action of this, which is slide 12. Um, and uh, I'm, we're going to try and uh. Do some reflection on what you individually are committed to to help move these work plan priorities forward. Um, and we're thinking in the next one to three years is kind of the timeline. So in the next one to years, I am committed to. Um, and I'm going to give you a minute or so um uh to think about it and um. And you can, it can be one thing, it can be a couple of things. Um, and if you are are ready to go and you've got the Google slides doc up and you're not having an issue, you can go ahead and start typing your commitments in where it says your name. Um, if you're not able to access the Google slides, um, you can finish the statement, you know, I am committed to X, Y, Z in the next one three years and put. Or into the chat box and we'll transfer it in.
It's fun to watch your commitments go up.
Jumping Jupiter, if everybody does their own thing, we're going to change the world here.
You guys are movers and shakers.
Cheryl, did you put yours in the chat box?
I'm trying to now. It's I have all this typing.
Okay. Cheryl says I'm not committing to anything.
No, I'm just.
And in the meantime, Mike is writing a novel.
Yeah.
I'm making mine simple because I hope, you know, it's.
Three point.
Kind of tie it to.
You are welcome to do multiple commitments. And in fact, site staff may not have a choice.
Okay, there you go, Myra. It's not much, but.
So.
I'll grab it, Myra.
And if and if you've got a personal commitment, um, you obviously just spend time reading through others. I'm not going to have us go through each one just because we're getting um close to the end of our time together and I want to. Um, just have a quick wrap up conversation.
I already hit it pasting. Sorry, Tracy.
You're good.
Pendulum clock is going to bong here any second.
Already?
Yep.
See what happens when you have fun?
Yeah. You want me to, you want me to stop the swinger?
Yeah, could you hold it please?
I like it.
Stop time. I'm John.
Um, might be too late.
You can put yourself on mute.
We can cover the clock. Cover your ears.
Yeah.
Okay, I heard a Cher song in that.
If I could turn to that time. Erica got a kick out of it.
Doesn't that remind you that you're, we are being recorded?
Uh oh.
The more reason they want, we want us them to know we're human beings.
Yeah.
And then we, in two hours after this heavy work, we feel a little different.
Yeah. All right, so I'm going to move us on a slide and then John's going to take us out with a song and dance number. No, I'm just kidding. Um, and that is just, um, I I just want to know what what's standing out to you from our time together. Oh, there goes John's clock. What what stands out to you from our time together today?
Okay.
Our session as well.
Okay, well, I'm, I'll pop in. Um. I think it's, it's really heartening that we are pretty much on the same page. Um, you know, to what we'd like to see the HR do and and focus on. So that's great. You know, sometimes you have a session like this and discover that you're all at odds and it's nice to be with a group that. Actually does work together, so.
And I would go with build on that by saying that. Really impressed with how everybody's passion for the work that we came through this session. Um, you know, everybody brings something different, but at the same time, we all have a deep understanding of the importance of the work that we do.
We're coming together as a team.
Yeah.
Brian, I missed like the second or third word you said. You kind of broke out. Impressed with?
The passion that everyone has brought to this, to the work that we're doing.
Everybody is really engaged.
Becky?
I just feel that everybody, it's been a very supportive conversation as well, though. It just shows the respect and everything. It's been a very supportive dialogue.
Yeah, I like that. Really a good comment.
Yep.
So I'll say um, from the last session and this session, I was um excited that um, one, everyone is on the same page. Two, we have a really supportive board and three, um, we're just putting the plan on paper. Just so we're all clear. So that's really exciting to me that it's it's not a plan that wasn't necessarily in place. It's just being put on paper and made clear to everyone.
What's important about what we've done here today?
And I think it's really important that it's clear, we have clarity that our values are aligned with our mission and our purpose.
We have a roadmap.
Yeah, to kind of expand upon that and what Erica said too, just having it on paper. We kind of had this unspoken knowledge, but having it on paper just makes it real.
I was just going to say that. It makes it real.
I will say that um, what's important that I noticed, and I love that everybody's on the same page, is that section eight and creation and preservation are our non-negotiables.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what we prioritize, like they are our non-negotiables. They happen regardless and we'll always have staff dedicated to them, so.
Not sure how to say this, so don't start typing right away, but. What we have done is we've made some major commitments and now we're going to have to, this is, we're setting up an evaluation for ourselves and it's going to be a high bar.
Well, that's that, that's what happens when you write things down, John. Once you make that to do list, you're stuck.
Yep.
But and this, this is not so much a comment for the list we just made. This is kind of an overall comment. I've gone through processes like this before. And they have not always been successful. I just want to compliment everybody. This was really enjoyable. I've gone through some of these kind of sessions where. You just sat there waiting for things to get over. Um, this was like really useful and uh, it was a good team bit, like someone said, it was a team builder.
And I just have to highlight what Cheryl said because we also did this in the midst of COVID um, over virtual space and this is usually done in person. It takes about eight hours. So just want to highlight that. So thank you, Margaret, Mike, Tracy.
Yeah.
Um, in particular for really, and Myra for really putting all this together and facilitating and navigating because this was huge. So thank you.
Absolutely. Not easy to do.
Yeah, from a commissioner, we have a marvelous staff and this just proved it. You guys are fabulous.
Well, stop it, you guys.
That's so. I'm going to make it a little bit uh concrete, at least for my mind. I think um. But um, important about what we've done really goes back to the planning uh and and implementation. So we. Uh, it it wasn't just to get together and kind of see what we came up with. It was very intentional. And um, Margaret, you've done a nice job. Uh, Tracy, all the staff. So uh, thank you for for that.
It was definitely a team effort.
Yep.
Thank you. And and we've really, um, it's, it's been great to have all of your participation and um patience. And um, bearing with us throughout the process. So um, it it made for just a great uh session. Um, any thoughts about next steps uh for the group to move this forward?
So I have a thought. Um, it'll be put together in a strategic planning document and then a work plan that aligns with the strategic plan. Um, and presented for um, review and approval at the annual meeting on March 9th.
Great, that's great.
Wonderful.
Sounds fair. Anybody want to add any other next steps?
Well, it's kind of an intermediary step. I think uh, anything like this, I I'm a visual guy, so seeing what you are doing and we'll we'll give out to us, I'm sure. All of these lists uh need to reflect on them a little bit and uh let it steep.
Certainly, we will be um, we'll be uh kind of spiffing up these notes and then sending them back out and you will get a copy of these facilitation notes. And then um, I'm sure the plans of the HRA staff are to, will be following up with you to um, both share the notes as well as uh, of course, the work plan as well that you'll end up voting on. All right.
I I I said it once before and I know the going happened, but I, I really think uh, one of the things. I guess I said early on is that I think we need to uh get some focus for short term and long term because this list is uh unattainable in in one year.
So what we're hoping is that that the the dots and stars that we did can help provide some of that focus. Uh, we were hoping to provide some kind of emphasis. Uh, and direction to staff so that they know, you know, where they really needed, need to be focusing on for their their work plan. Recognizing that just because something didn't get started or dotted doesn't mean it doesn't happen. It just means that it it, these other things probably need to happen first. Or are more essential given limited resources. Um, so I don't think any of this goes away, um, but I think um, you know, hopefully what we've provided here is is enough. Enough detail to, so that staff can kind of take it and run with it without being overly prescriptive about what they need. Because they need to match now this kind of more strategic vision with, you know, the realities on the ground and and the resources that they have. Um. So great, that is all we have for you tonight. Sounds like we're in. Ups. Um, and um, again, thank you all for your um candid, candid and um, and engaged participation. And uh, and it's been a pleasure and good luck. I can't wait to see all the the great work that comes out of this.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I would just like to echo what Margaret said and encourage you to celebrate yourselves and the work that you have done tonight. You know, we take some time to put into this, but you guys are the heart of what makes this happen. So celebrate your own work as well.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
We still have to adjourn that meeting.
We have to adjourn, folks.
Sorry, sorry.
Is everybody still here?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all right. Well, thank you again, everyone, for your hard work. This has been awesome. I I'll take a motion to adjourn. Was that uh Commissioner Olson I heard?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lewis, second.
Okay, motion by Olson, second by Lewis. I'll do the roll call vote. Pugheim.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Orson is an I, oops, and Olson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Margaret?